Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us for our workshop tonight. I'm going to turn it right over because I know we are pressed on time. Get started.
Great. Thanks, everyone. We're really excited to be coming back after our end-of-year data review to bring our K-5 principals here this evening to talk about their noticings and our beginning-of-the-year achievement data and how that has informed their action plans heading into the year. Lisa and I wanted to kick it off with just some general district-wide noticings to help set the stage for some of the things you might hear some of the administrators speaking to through the lens of their individual schools. So, three areas that we want to touch on. First, taking a look at iReady projected proficiency as an updated way for us to think about how we can be setting our goals each year in relationship to Smarter Balance Assessment and Reading and Math. We're going to take a look at how the Summer Literacy Enrichment Program has translated into learning for students at the beginning of the year. And then, we will take a look just more generally to K-5 and early literacy with an instructional focus. So, the first piece we wanted to show you, this is our East Haven data. What the bar graphs depict are how students are responding to instruction through the iReady platform, which we've seen to be a strong indicator of performance. When students are mid and above grade level, they are likely to perform on grade level or above with the Smarter Balance Assessment. What the blue bar indicates is that our students who, across two years, have met their stretch growth, you can see that it is completely transforming their academic outcomes. And we do have a number of students that are able to meet this benchmark. And so, what we wanted to show is in relationship to math -- no, go ahead and click the next one. So, with our BOY data, if students made no further growth, this is their proficiency projections on Smarter Balance, which come in very low, especially within math because the content is new each year. The next set of marks indicate what it would be for typical growth if students are making one year's expected average growth. And what we're putting our sights on is measurement towards their stretch growth. So, the goals that I laid out, they take a look at the space between typical growth and stretch growth, helping to identify these students that we know that we can move with Tier 1 differentiated instruction in the classroom. And the same is true for reading when we take a look at this. So, again, this is depicting if students don't make stretch growth, have it for one year, or again, if two years. The same scenario plays out in reading. And so, in terms of where we start with our BOY, across grades 3 through 8, we see if there was no further growth, if students just made their typical growth, and again, same scenario if they are able to hit that stretch growth. And so, again, this just gives a little bit of context for some of the data that was provided to you in terms of superintendent priority outcomes for the year ahead. The next piece we wanted to take a look at, you're going to hear about our DIBELS data and the work that we are doing in relationship to it to support our early readers. And so, this is that stair step for literacy skill development that we've looked at before. And so, turning to look at our summer school program. So, we looked at students who participated in the summer enrichment program and had an attendance rate of 90% or better, so they only missed two of the 20 days. And we wanted to look at how did this impact reducing the summer slide for students? That regression that is really typical that we see for students who are not yet at grade level. And so, with that group of students, we see a shift in their beginning-of-the-year DIBELS composite. We did have regression for 8% of those students, but 70% were able to maintain their current standing, and 22 actually improved one level across the summer. So, they may have gone from below to on, well below to below, but that is progress that we don't typically see over the summer months. Translating that to those instructional focus in that ladder, we saw that 10% moved back one step, 74 were able to sustain their current work, and again, 16% were ready for the next step in their literacy development. So, we're really excited to see some of that progress coming together. Expanding that out to look at our K-5 population, so everyone, not just those in the summer reading program. We wanted to draw attention to three particular grade levels where we saw significant movement with our BOY data this year that's having pretty significant impact on the way that we're thinking about professional learning and where teachers are focusing their time. Kindergarten, for the first time, our kindergarteners' BOY placement is on par with the national average. So, that's looking at all kindergartners who participate in the DIBELS eighth edition, so over 800,000 kindergartners nationwide. And it's pretty impressive. And we're going to come back and talk about some of the factors that are leading to that, but that is tremendous impact for kindergarten in general. We see 11% reduction in students that are intensive in all areas. So, they are ready for blending and to be pushed to decoding and reading fluently on grade level. So, we're excited. We haven't seen that in recent time. Third grade was another area of focus with seeing an 8% increase of students that are ready for fluency, prosody, comprehension, so they're ready for that next level work to be supported in grade-level text. And fifth grade was where we saw some of the most significant transformation, 11% reduction in students decoding, so still learning to read, with 14% increase of students placed in vocab comprehension. So, that really is calling for the need for us to think about access to rigorous grade-level texts and how we're supporting that throughout the day. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to talk about three targeted areas in relationship to this data, just briefly, before we turn it over to our first principal.
So, one priority is really improving our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support processes across all buildings to increase the appropriateness and the effectiveness of interventions. So, you're seeing a snapshot, screenshot of Panorama Student Success, which is really a very user-friendly, comprehensive data warehouse that centralizes and unifies the data that we're looking at about students, updated daily, so teachers really have just-in-time information at their fingertips when they're deciding on actions to support students. And this is really allowing educators and administrators to create and monitor intervention plans that drive outcomes. It also increases communication and transparency across levels, across classrooms, and all the professionals that might be working with a particular student and looking at their support needs. So, addressing needs at the root cause level is really, whether it's academic, social, emotional, is critical. And that's one that leads into this second area, which is accelerating math learning. And we talked about the math acceleration model last year. This is an ongoing effort to support math instruction at Tier 1, but also in the intervention program. The math coaches and team continues to develop guidance on the math acceleration model and the most critical skills that are needed to ensure that students are moving forward in math and that we're not trying to remediate every skill, but really getting to those points where students are going to be able to be in front of grade-level content and move toward mastery while supplementing some of those areas of need that they have. So, Grade 3 guidance has been shared in all buildings. Grade 2 is going to be done by the end of next Tuesday, we think, and then we'll continue to move on back to Grade 4. So, there's a lot of material that's been developed and is supporting that work. We also added a professional learning pathway this year where math teachers are getting to work with their grade-level content and build in those acceleration strategies while they unpack their units. And finally, in all Tier 1 instruction, we're focused on increasing rigor and access to high-quality material and resources. And these are some screenshots and some information about inquiry journeys, the social studies curriculum that's fully in place in all K-5 classrooms this year. And this has central goals of analyzing information across text types for a variety of purposes, but it's really centered in putting the student at the center of the learning as they practice all the attributes of the vision of the graduate and culminating in taking informed action at the end of those units. So, kids are really enjoying it. You can see in some of the pictures how active the learning is, and this is also really informing the work of our core program review for ELA.
Thanks, Lisa. So, we're going to have Laura Cottella from Dear Run share some noticings and how that's informing next steps this year.
The light goes green.
Yeah, I think it's on.
Perfect. Thank you so much for welcoming us here tonight. So, I get to launch all the elementary principals with our youngest learners pre-K3 to Grade 2. So, we started off when we were looking as a Dear Run team at our beginning-of-the-year data, looking at our kindergarten first and second graders with that beginning-of-the-year DIBELS data. So, thinking about our kindergartners compared to last year's kindergartners, we had a lot more students at or above benchmark compared to previous years. And I think the biggest change for our kindergartners this year is they're more available to learn. So, they're a little bit older, they have more school readiness skills, and they just know school a little bit better. So, teachers were able to jump in really quickly for small groups, targeted whole group, quicker than in past years. Our first grade and second grade, some of those students did attend the summer literacy program and were able to hold on to some of those skills, and some of those students regressed a little bit, and we're trying to get them back on track. Similarly, in math, our scores look, I would say, much lower than we ended last year in thinking about what we're going to do as a result of our iReady math scores. We have a significant number below benchmark in both first and second grade. So, some of the work that our math coaches doing is thinking about some of that Tier 1 instruction and what we're doing whole class, what are we doing small class in the classroom, what are we doing with some targeted pull-out small group, and then how are we linking that with some of our specialized services at Dear Run. So, we're thinking about small group instruction, not only in literacy, but numeracy. So, we also shifted the day of our instructional paraeducators this year, where all of our instructional paraeducators are there only for instructional times. So, our traditional kindergarten instructional paras are doing small groups in both kindergarten and pre-K, and I'll circle back to pre-K in a minute. Our traditional first-grade paraeducators, this is year 2, where they've both supported in Grade 1 and Grade 2, and that has really helped some of our second graders kind of hit the ground running because it's maybe with an instructional para that was familiar with their learning style from the year before. We're also doing a lot of work, sorry, with our whole group writing instruction and working as grade levels on how we're going to kind of move that work forward. Our first grade really took a leadership role last year and how they were delivering writing whole group and now kind of getting kindergarten and second grade to move along. So, I did highlight a little bit for pre-K, and that comes out of the Connecticut Early Learning and Development Standards, like thinking about what students birth to age 5. And you're probably wondering, while you're talking about K through 2, why are you talking about pre-K? So, right now, we have almost close to 60 pre-K students attending Dear Run. Some with specialized plans with an IEP, and some are serving just as typically developing pre-K peers. So, we started implementing some of our pre-K foundations, and that's where it came in with our kindergarten instructional paras also supporting in small groups and pre-K to have that consistent language across kindergarten and pre-K. And the two strands that I kind of highlighted in the next two slides, the first one is language comprehension, and the second one is vocabulary. Many of our students that are coming into Dear Run as a three-year-old, either on their third birthday or shortly after, have no traditional ways to communicate like you and I. They may be communicating through point or basic signs, and many of our students, by the time that they're leaving pre-K, have some more traditional ways to communicate. They may be communicating in an oral fashion, they may be doing that in a combination of gestures and signs. And so, thinking about celebrating where students have come from, and then, as they come into our kindergarten classrooms, they may be below on our DIBELS assessment, but if you celebrate kind of where they started, and they may not have had any oral language, I just kind of wanted to note kind of both of those slides for where some of our students are. Some of those pre-K students end up as kindergartners at Mamawgwin and Tuttle, so they don't all stay at Dear Run, so that may be showing up in different ways at the other buildings. And this just kind of talks about the oral language skills that we're working on in that pre-K program, some functional sign language. Some students are using some communication devices, and sometimes, by the time they get to kindergarten, they're no longer using those devices, and then some picture exchange systems or PEX. And then, thinking about our targeted areas specifically at Dear Run is always kind of linking our professional development, not only for certified staff, but paraeducators. Moving forward, I think this is a great opportunity for some strategic planning for our specialized programs. We are traditional K through 2, but running some specialized programs pre-K and K through 2 for students with autism. And just that integration of delivery of instruction from both regular ed and special education. We have a coaching session tomorrow with the Hill from Literacy and the staff that are participating at Dear Run, our two of our resource room special ed teachers and one of our new interventionists.
Thank you. That's perfect.
Thanks, Laura.
Welcome, Julie Churchapp from Mamawgwin.
I apologize about my voice. I'm a little under the weather, so, but I'm going to do the best I can to get through. When looking at the beginning-of-year data and reflecting on the uniqueness of Mamawgwin Elementary School, it was very important to highlight some of the differences in staffing this year before I speak to the data differences in staffing before I speak to the data because we have a very young staff. So, if I look at 24 individuals who are on our evaluation caseloads, seven of those individuals are in Year 1 or 2, seven are in Year 3 or 4, and the other 10 are traditional, more veteran teachers. And I think that's so important because everything that I'm going to speak to talks about the support and the ongoing job-embedded professional development that we see as our focus. And when we reflect on the data, we see how that has shown significant impact on student progress from the beginning-of-year data that have had those supports. So, our kindergarten in Grade 1, as Adam had shared, there's an area of strength that our students this year are higher achieving at the beginning of the year than we've seen in the past. That is absolutely wonderful because if we take that model of progress and we shift it to what we've accomplished last year, we should see results that have more than half of our population at or above grade level by the mid-year point. Sorry. In Grade 1, one thing of particular interest that I really wanted to mention is that the nonsense word fluency, which is an indicator on that staircase that Adam had spoken to of words recorded correctly, the subtest, has 69% of our students have scored at or above in those green or blue bars. The instructional focus, again, this is looking at DIBELS data and basically taking a look at each grade level and where they are with regard to decoding. You can see that kindergarten comes in with 88% of our students having a letter sound focus for their instructional groupings through the Hill for Literacy model and the continuum work that we're doing. Again, that job-embedded professional learning, supporting beginning educators as well as veteran teachers with the science of reading work. And that we want to see the decoding need drop, and we do with 54% of students in Grade 1. Grade 2 is an area that we will focus on because there's still a significant focus of decoding need, and it does go down. And in fifth grade in particular, we have 6% of students, which is in alignment with an MTSS model, which is about 5% of students, right? So, we're just 1% off, who would still need that instructional focus. But when we look at 59% of students meeting the grade-level standard at the start of the year, it creates a new problem, a wonderful problem. How do we push those students? How do we stretch those students? And when we had our beginning-of-year meetings, those were the questions that surfaced. So, how do we provide the support for educators who may be earlier in their career that may not have such a large bag of tricks but are now faced with a wonderful challenge of stretching students and providing opportunities for them to grow and meet their full potential? So, again, these are just some of those noticings. Where are the opportunities for learning that we can stretch the students who are performing at or above? I think that we have lots of systems in place to support our remedial students through the multi-tiered systems of support, our MTSS process. However, at Mamawgwin this year, we're going to put a particular focus on stretching the students who are at the opposite end of that bell curve that are really performing. Let me flip right through that one because I kind of spoke to it. So, our strategic goals, our first one, and I opened with that because I'm very passionate about strengthening that Tier 1 instruction with job-embedded coaching. Just reflecting on the year, you know, we haven't been able to fill a role that's open right now, the math coach. We will. Our new coach begins on Monday, and I'm super excited about that. But having that position open for the past six, eight weeks of school we've been in, it's really brought to light the impact that the coach has on the planning and in the instruction and meeting student needs. So, our focus is on strengthening the Tier 1 instruction with that model, with that coaching model. Supporting a changing population. At Mamawgwin, a few meetings ago, it was shared that we have a population of 24% of our students now are exceptional learners. That's higher than the district average. It's also higher than the state average. And what do we put in place to support teachers to meet those needs of our students? And so, we're seeking out opportunities to send them for training. Just in the past week, we had two individuals attend an autism toolbox training just to build their confidence in providing instruction for a diverse population. Our attendance and engagement, I know that I won't steal his shows because I know that Mr. Brown is going to speak to some work that we're doing together on culture and climate, but we have seen improved attendance for staff and students this year, which is wonderful. But we have an action plan in place for our attendance team and our culture and climate that will hopefully keep students motivated and in attendance. Did I miss one? Oh, I did positive call. Thanks, sorry. Sorry, it's not good when you don't feel good. We have been selected this year. We were granted a primary project grant for school mental health, and this individual actually started today. So, we have a child associate who will be working with us to identify two rounds of students. It's a 12-week program where students engage in almost a play therapy that is overseen by a mental health worker in the building. We're very excited about that. It will allow the resources that we have in the building, the social worker, our school psychologist, to address more significant concerns in Tier 3 supports, whereas the primary project will give us support at the Tier 2 level. So, very excited about that. That will impact our students in kindergarten through Grade 3. The staff training and professional learning, I know I spoke about a recent training, but we're also looking into something that is put out by the Crisis Prevention Institute. I know that in district, we offer CPI training, that Crisis Prevention Institute, to staff across the district, especially paraeducators. We're looking into the reframing behavior, neuroscience-based training that's actually designed to prevent disruptive behaviors. So, again, looking at our population, what our needs are, and how we can best serve them. And our next step, oh, I missed my above, I'll go back, sorry, thanks. Go back one. An above-grade-level grouping. So, students who are receiving the tiered instruction, again, we have systems in place, we have progress monitoring, we have a platform to capture all that information. This year, in addition to that, we're focusing on capturing the information for the students who are meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations and how we're showing their progress and growth because we know that those are actually some of the hardest students to move, and we want to ensure that they're meeting with success and able to demonstrate that success on state assessments. Now, I'll go back, sorry. So, our next step is job-embedded professional learning focused on evidence-based literacy and numeracy practices to use data to drive and support our learning for all students, and that learning is academic, it's also social-emotional learning. So, I spoke of the primary project. All of that information will be gathered and housed in a platform that the state will then evaluate the effectiveness of our program through. And we hope to see increased student belonging and connection through that project and work to increase our collaboration between special education and regular education staff to meet the needs of a quarter of our population. If I haven't said it like five times already, I'm very proud of the Primary Mental Health Project Grant. I'm also really proud this year of our increased family engagement. We will continue to serve families with literacy nights through grant-funded dollars. This year in particular, I'm super proud of our PTO. I've been there prior to the start of this year, just a little over a year, and we had about five, six members on our PTO. Our first meeting that met up here, we had 20-something in person and a few online. And that shift is huge because we know that we need the collaboration between families and them truly as our partners. We have our attendance initiatives that are very effective, and our collaboration with Tuttle School, and our professional days, and our energy bus work. We just recently brought our two staffs together to collaborate. It was such a wonderful day. Staff was thrilled, and yeah, I'm very excited, and thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Up next, Christina Torrey for East Haven Academy.
Hi, everybody.
Is this on? It is? Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, I know we're going to look at just overall percentages here, so I'm just going to very quickly kind of glaze over this because I'd like to get right into the noticings and the next steps. I also know we have a time limit. So, for reading, you'll notice that is our beginning-of-the-year reading diagnostic results. And Grade 1 had the highest percentage of students coming in at or above benchmark, and I want to refer back to something that Laura Cottella said in that we are seeing a higher percentage of students come in at that level, and of course, EHA is a school where we have students come in from all of the elementary schools. So, I think that just speaks volumes about just the district-wide shifts in the right directions that we're all going. Grade 4 had the lowest percentage at or above benchmark, but, you know, I also kind of want to note that the yellow isn't necessarily a bad place to be at the BOY. So, if you were to combine that, Grade 1 had 80-- grade one had 86% of students either approaching benchmark or at or above. Grade two had 66% approaching or at or above. 49% with that combined in grade three, 61% at grade four, and then 48 in grade five. So I, I kind of like to look at it through that lens too. Again, keeping in mind this, this is beginning of year data. Same thing for math. Again, if we were to combine that at or above with the approaching, at the beginning of the year, grade one had a total of 73% of students combined in those categories. Again, that's a higher percent that we've seen in years past with students that are coming in with, with higher levels. In grade two, the combination was 50% approaching or at or above. Grade three, 47%. Grade four, 39%. And grade five, 58%. That's not to dismiss the fact that of course, we do still have percentages that are below benchmark and we have a lot of work to do. But again, I, I did want to celebrate that we are seeing higher percentages coming in, which again, it, it's a testament to all of the work being done amongst all of the elementary schools. So if we can go right into the noticeings. Again, although it wasn't charted, just looking at our DIBELS data. Our DIBELS data is coming, we're seeing a trend from 2003, 2004, and 2005. The percentages of students at or above grade level within DIBELS in the beginning of the year, from 2023 was at 36%, jumped to the next year at 24%. Now, at the beginning of the year, we're at 52% at or above. And this year, we came in at 64% at or above. And again, I know I keep sounding like, like a broken record, but that really just speaks volumes to all of the work being done across the grade level, especially in particular with our partnership with the Hill for Literacy. And not only are they coming in at higher percentages, but they are coming in with a higher leveled, targeted instructional focus within small groups. I think Julie was the one that mentioned about we want to try to continue to decrease the level of students who kind of stay stagnant or stay within that decoding. Well, we're starting to see that. Our, our students that are coming in are already coming in with a higher level focus, which is great to see. For math, the highest percentage of students below benchmark fell within the domain, within measurement and data and geometry. And this is something that we have seen also in the past. We have a lot of work to do in those domains, which I will touch about in a minute. But overall, the highest percentage of students approaching grade level, which again, isn't a horrible place to be at the beginning of the year, within grades one through five, that was the highest percentage within all, within grades one through five. We can go right into strategic goals. Okay. So strategic goals, we want to continue to make significant growth towards end of year grade level expectations. And I know there's been a lot of talk about the Panorama Student Success Platform. We really are diving into this. It really is one-stop shopping. And we use this platform throughout our EIT process to develop specific tiered goals for students with intervention plans. We've also created many student groups within the Student Success Platform. For example, we made a student group of all students who are brand new to EHA this year just to track their attendance, their SEL, all components. So it really is a nice feature. Throughout grade level meetings, the student, the teachers are basing what they need and building those agendas in order to continue to enhance tier one differentiation. And that Hill for Literacy work, which I know has been mentioned a few times tonight, ensures that that rigor and all students are developing that targeted small group instruction. And we're constantly looking at that work, not only through Panorama, but through the Continuum Platform to make sure that we are tweaking and keeping that goal so that all students are continuing to work at their ceiling, as we call it. We want to continue to find that place where they are, where we call productively struggling. We also just recently, at our last half-day professional development building-based PD day on October 22nd, we dove deep into the speaking and listening standards and used that work to unpack the standards and also partner that with what we're currently doing within small group FOCI to continue that work. One of our main focuses last year and continued this year at EHA is to constantly be looking at student discourse and affording students maximum opportunities for what we call purposeful talk. And so this was part of our work and our rationale behind taking that deeper dive into the speaking and listening standards as we continue that focus and that work. Okay, we'll go into next step, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I think I wrapped that one up. So our next steps, you know, as we've said, we're continuing our focus with the Hill for Literacy. We just had a site visit with Stephanie Gonzalez last week, and we are continuing to have that set up, really focusing this year on affording our special education teachers, a kind of an equitable partnership with that. So we had a wonderful day with Stephanie and our special education teachers last week where we went in and observed some teachers using the Hill for Literacy decoding plans, fluency plans, and vocab comprehension plans, and then gave our special education teachers an opportunity to reflect with us and then have some collaborative planning time with us. So we're really moving forward with that. We are integrating instruction. I'm going out of order, sorry. I want to go back to the measurement data and geometry, that domain that fell within the lowest percentage of our overall math. We are really putting a heavy focus this year in integrating work around those domains in all of our domains. For instance, I will just give you an example. In music class, our music teacher does a fabulous job of just incorporating some math-related vocabularies. Math, or music is very mathematical. The same thing in art and technology. I would say the same thing also with our integration of comprehension of literature and informational texts because that was a domain that we saw percentages that we'd like to be a little bit higher. So again, embedding or exposing our students to comprehension of informational texts. And again, I'll give an example, such as math word problems, science with those real-life applications. Again, our music teacher and our art teacher do fabulous jobs of kind of giving historical, biological aspects of either the artist or the musician that comes from the piece that they're studying and exposing them to informational texts around that. We've also been diving into the Smarter Balanced Teacher Toolkit. And this allows teachers to utilize performance tasks that are focused on specific standards and domains. And it's also wonderful exposure and practice for the type of format that they will see in the spring, come time smarter balanced assessment time. We're continuing to support our students with all kinds of fun incentives to complete their iReady My Path lessons. And also, teachers are continuing to tweak those and differentiate those. Again, it's about finding the student's ceiling. We want them to constantly be productively struggling. The math coaches, and I, I think it was either Laura or Julie that mentioned it, are working on the Accelerated Math Program, which has a bunch of wonderful resources that the teachers are really diving into. Prior to being a principal, I was a math coach, so I could talk about this stuff all day. But some of the resources are just really wonderful. And there's been just a, a lot of excitement around this added bank of resources that teachers are utilizing throughout their math instruction. They're working really hard on that. And the last thing I wanted to mention, and Julie, you did a really nice job touching on this, is that we are piloting an aspect of Panorama called the Student Check-In, which is really an SEL data collection tool. As what's mentioned prior, the SEL components of our students is so important. If the social and emotional well-being is there, then the academics shall come, right? I mean, that's what we always say. And so Stephanie Rivalini has teamed up with us, and we are piloting this aspect with fourth grade. And so far, we're, it's really been helpful. It's just granting our students an opportunity to check in. We've arranged it, so we are arranging it midday. And it's a place where teachers are finding an easy way to kind of check in with students about just how their day is going and then make those further connections. So we've started in fourth grade, and our plan is to expand this with our entire EHA staff. Again, SEL is so important. So this is just another additional layer and tool that will help not only the teachers, but the students' well-being. Next steps. I just kind of highlighted some random points of pride. Mr. Swinney visited our school earlier this year because our, our current second graders won the summer reading challenge for the district. And I just love celebrating things like that, always wanting to keep our, our students reading and celebrating that when they do. We are super excited about some upcoming family literacy nights that we are doing with Literacy How. We have our first one scheduled for December 10th. And we have a second one scheduled for the end of April. I know other schools have done this with the Juicy Words Focus, but this will be EHA's first time around, and we're really, really excited about it. In grade three in particular, the math coach and teachers are collaborating, again, with those accelerated resources and really taking off. They're really, really helping to further drive differentiated small group instruction within math. And a big piece I just wanted to mention is that we have a lot of teachers focusing their professional goals around shifting what we call the mathematical mindset. You know, all too often, we'll come across someone that says, "Math's not my thing." And as a result, we'll have students that kind of come in with that mindset. "Math's not my thing." Well, we're going to change that. Math is everybody's thing. And it really is about just shifting your thoughts about math. And so I just quoted, we recently got a parent message from one of the students who's currently receiving tiered support in math. And she wrote, "He is now motivated to be better in math." So we talked that as, we took that as a small win because that's such a big thing. The mindset is everything for, for everyone, including our students, so. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you so much, Christina.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we welcome Chris Brown, Tuttle.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for having us join you for this evening for our, for the presentation. I again, am going to start off with two slides that are going to look very similar to you by now because it's the, the graphic representation of some of our BOY reading. But what I wanted to draw your attention to on this particular slide was a trend that has been referenced by a couple of the different administrators. If you would ignore for a moment, if you would, grade one, and instead, track your eye across the grade two, three, four, and five, and isolate, if you will, the red bar at the bottom. What that is, the students who are beginning that particular grade at a below-benchmark status. And what we're seeing with our plans and implementation of a few different programs, we've gone from 47 to 35 to 30. And then we have an anomaly at grade five, which is at 46%. Diving, diving into that a little deeper, we have nine new students, roughly 20% of our fifth grade class right now, that was not with us in East Haven last year. So we didn't really have a great particular handle on that group. So that is kind of an outlier. Moving back over though to the grade one, I'll reference what some of the other administrators have said. We are poised to move better, more efficiently and quicker because of the skillset that our grade one students are demonstrating at the beginning of year, a testament to our, our kindergarten programs that are promoting that level of growth. And if you glance over to K, we, that 47 is definitely a reduced number from what we've seen before in the past. Students are having better experiences earlier on and coming to us a little better prepared. And again, the age shift was significant too. In the math, we see a similar trend on the reduction of the students that are struggling with us at the beginning of the year, drawing another way down from grade two to grade five. And again, showcasing that grade one where there's a really significant difference, level of ability, and it introduces the component that many people have shared. We have upper ends that we have to try to meet the enrichment programs for to make sure that we're addressing those learners and their needs too. This year, we have a stronger starting point in reading as shown in those BOY assessments, those ones I just kind of highlighted a moment ago. I did want to reference that the number of students that we had that attended the 2025 summer school retained much of the growth. They picked up where they left off. We were also used to, as many others, seeing that summer slide and needing to catch back up and put them back on track. Instead, what we saw is they kind of picked up where they left off. Our first grade initial placement in both reading and mathematics allows us to start in a different place. And then I wanted to reference just one particular area within the different facets of our reading program, and that's a skill called decoding. It is something that is very critical to having a reader be able to be a successful reader. And what we looked for trend-wise was a difference between the start of our 2024 year and our 2025 year to make sure that we're trending in the right direction. Decoding is a skill we want to make sure we've got a good handle on, particularly at the upper elementary level. So in our grade four, we went from a 48 to a 38%. The number of students assigned a decoding focus means that they are struggling in that area. So when we talk about a reduction in the percentage, it means that less students overall needed to be assigned that area to sort of shore up some of their skills. And at the grade five level, we went from 33 to 29. So although not leaps and bounds, definitely trending in the right direction for us with the number of students who need to, to have that as their focus. And in mathematics, I just wanted to make sure to reference the largest portion of our population falls into that approaching grade level category. And as Mrs. Torre pointed out, the geometry as a domain continues to plague us in terms of student performance. Our strategic goals. We wanted to make sure to support small group instruction blocks with tiered supports. We, as everyone else, have, we have an MTSS process. Our MTS process at Tuttle has been very strong. We've had a lot of mechanics that have been in place for a number of years and also some ways of collecting data that made it accessible to our staff. But our MTSS process was able to take a giant leap this year into the Panorama Platform. Our Panorama Platform allows us to, I think someone coined, "one-stop shopping" so that all of the information that we need in a warehouse is accessible in one location. So although Tuttle had been collecting its own information and data per student and capturing it in a system that we had that was unique to us and other buildings were doing unique to them, we now have a forum where we can put in all the opportunities that the student has had so far. We've captured a historical piece of data for them, that's static, so you can go look back to see what intervention a Tuttle student had last year in the fall, what type of progress they made. And we found that to be a really critical piece because we do have some movement among schools. So if a student were to transfer in, all that usable information is, is there for the next inherent team to pick up and use. And for this entire year, what we're doing is capturing our ongoing data in that location as well. It offers a student success plan. It offers a student success plan. It offers the student check-in. So it really is an exceptional piece for us to be using. And we're still figuring out some of the nuances for it, but it is moving us in the right direction as a data warehouse. I also wanted to remark on our feedback systems. I referenced our school climate team, which is up and running, just so at Tuttle. But we also have a number of different entities that look at student information from different lenses. We have a school-wide leadership team. We have a school-wide academic team. We have a pupil services team that makes sure that their finger is on the pulse of what's happening with the students that they need to make sure are critically moving forward. So we explore attendance, we explore culture and climate. And the reason I put that into the category of feedback is we take what comes out of those teams and make them into action plans so that there is something different to be done due to the analysis of the data that we collect. Our last one, our shifting our entire culture to positivity and collaboration, the energy bus. I don't know about you guys, but I'm a big fan of like metaphors and things that kind of engage your brain in a unique way. So this year, Julie Church and I had both read a book by John Gordon called The Energy Bus. It's a fairly brief read. If you haven't hit it, it's kind of worthwhile. And the metaphor there, of course, is the school bus, which is perfectly apropos for us. And it talks about boarding the bus with positivity. In fact, the bus driver's name is Joy. They kind of beat you over the head with it a little bit, but the experiences that you have that promote positivity and sort of transform your accessibility to be a more engaged learner, a more confident individual. And we decided to promote that as a tenant for this year to make sure the students are more poised to be in the right place to get what we're giving them and they can respond to us appropriately. So if you were to stop in some of the buildings, the bulletin boards are all buses, we're wearing bus pins, really kind of wrapping themselves in a culture that reminds them of that. We even took some of our inherent systems and we flipped them. We had had a PBIS model, which was a token system last year where students were given Tuttle bucks in order to build up to an ability to purchase something, a perk, something at school store. We're trying an experiment and pilot right now of removing the token-based system. All students are granted the opportunity to attend that as long as they maintain their efforts and their positivity. And if they don't for that particular month, there's a curve correct, but they won't have that opportunity. They start over again on the first of November with another month-long initiative. November will be thankfulness and we all move forward toward that. So trying to flip that script a little bit to see if it makes a significant difference. I've seen it in the staffs. Last Wednesday, as Julie mentioned, we put Tuttle team and Mollwin team together, gave them an opportunity to work on curriculum and content and have an experience with the tool we wanted them to use. And as I saw the excitement engaged between them, our schools are very similar in dynamic. K5, they moved away from there and I got copied on a number of documents later on the same day. Hey, this is our kindergarten shared folder. We wanted to make sure to engage with ideas that you might want to see. And it really kickstarted a lot of nice interwoven activity between the two buildings. Our targeted area of opportunity for us, I think as you saw, our math is not poised as well to make some of the growth as our reading program is. So we're going to shift over to a math acceleration model. I think some people have already referenced it. The coaches are building this model and it's available at all grade levels. Basically, one major premise of it though is not just one individual person kind of carrying forward an acceleration model, but rather our teams, which critically look at accelerating growth, methods that we can accelerate growth, who it is that can be the champion of moving the student forward, addressing their needs, and finding a way to kind of speed them up a little bit and not have any particular loss of learning. Just literally the definition of acceleration. We think we can go a little faster. Many of our curriculum spiral, so you will have a second and third encounter with this particular skill. So if we don't get to full mastery at the beginning, that's okay. Our skills are going to be coming up again and we're going to hit it. And sometimes even pre-teaching, being proactive about an upcoming skill where we introduce so that when the students are able to engage with it, they're farther along. Our current shift to energy bus has created a much more positive culture. We have students, our attendance rate is up right now. The number of office referrals and concerns for students with behaviors is decreased over the course of the first few weeks of school. Our student needs model, I guess I left this for the last slide. So a few years back, many of the elementary schools shifted to a WIN model designed to be called what I need. And basically, the premise of finding what a student needs as an individual and then preparing materials so that that skill, that particular sub-skill is presented to them and they are working toward it is a fantastic premise. So what we're trying to do right now, we've shifted to a student needs model. And I could probably describe it best by saying, students were being seen by multiple service providers, whether it was a bilingual instructor, NESL instructor, a pupil services personnel. They were discreet. They were in these smaller locations and service was being provided by an adult or two. What we did instead was kind of dump everything out onto the table and say, if this adult is practicing this skill and this student needs it, are there any other students that need that same particular skill? So it's allowed for some cross-grade level grouping. It's allowed for some cross-classroom grouping. And what we're finding is those students, wherever they are, are having the opportunity to learn and develop that particular skill from the most highly qualified individual. And that also includes training some individuals to become more highly qualified to deliver that instruction. Similar again with WIN, we're pressing, as someone mentioned, our instructional paraprofessionals into different spaces to support the small group instruction in both reading and math. My first grade paraprofessionals now work inside of grade one and grade two and grade four because we've scheduled it in such a way so that they can be in those classes to support small group instruction and bring their expertise sort of over and over to different groups of students. I think I already got to number three. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And finally, we'll have Paul DiBernardo come present in regards to Ferrara.
I think we're okay if we go a little bit past seven.
I will get this done. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here. All right. I'm just going to very briefly go over our reaction to our data in both math and reading. This is a visual representation of where our students ended up for our beginning of year, I-ready math. Go on to the next slide. And some of the noticings we have, we noticed that fifteen percent of our students are on grade level or higher. Thirty-nine percent of the students are two or more grade levels below. This group will receive the intensive target intervention. And as Chris just mentioned and other principals, we're using the accelerated model with them. And forty-six percent of our students are one grade level below. For this group, we have a strong emphasis on tier one differentiated instruction in the classroom and a lot of small group interventions. Go on to the next slide, please. Our strategic goals. We want to increase the grade level or higher from fifteen percent to thirty-five percent. And I want to point out that we had this goal set for middle of the year. And we don't want to wait to the end of the year to see if what we're doing is working. So we gave ourselves a very hard target. And the other, Chris, you brought up the bell curve, some brought up the bell curve, but we call them bookends. The other side of that bookend is the students that need some of the most supports and intervention. We have twenty percent. We want to cut that down to ten percent by, again, by the middle of the year. All right? So we gave ourselves some very hard, specific targets and we'll know by the end of MOY testing, okay, are what we doing, is it effective? All right, some areas of opportunity. Here's what we're focusing on for our math. I just want to point out, just today when I was going over these slides, my math coach, who, thank you for being here, Mary Ann, we had a very interesting conversation about place value. And with place value, and if a student knows place value, and we brought up a conversation about the CMT, if a student knows place value, they're going to be pretty good in a lot of aspects of math. And so we spent a lot of, our conversation, our emphasis on making sure that students understand that digits carry a value with them. If they can manipulate that value, it gives them the tools necessary for not only their grade level math that they're going to be doing, but also the more advanced content that we eventually want them to have. I was having a, this is off-script a little bit, but I was having a conversation with Nate. I'm not going to get this done in seven minutes. I was having a conversation with Nate and...
We all knew that going in as soon as you said it, Paul.
Shocker.
And one of the things we said, and I brought this up from when I used to work in New Haven as a math coach, Christina, their math supervisor, Ken Matthews, we used to say in middle school, we used to say algebra for all. We wanted all kids to be algebra-ready. And so, you know, Mary Ann and I had this conversation as well, and a lot of that really does trickle down to number sense. And we also want to increase the exposure of abstract concepts through a lot of hands-on activities and initiatives. And also what we want to do is we work off of the student's strengths. We say, where are they now? And you need that data to do that. Okay, now they're strong here, where do we go from here? How do we build that up? And I know Julie was here when she said, you know, it's a nice problem to have when you have those strengths. Okay, we're going to drill down, we're going to see how we are going to use that. Our next steps. We want to prioritize the high-leverage domains and we're going to drill down to the why things are happening in math and not just the how, not just students figuring out just how to do the algorithm, but why is it happening? And what does that look like behind the scenes in math? And I'm going to convert back to place value on that because if kids have an understanding, a strong understanding of place value, they do understand the why. And again, forget the middle school, algebra for all, they're going to get there. And we do believe that it could happen. For tier two and tier three, we're going to do individualized interventions and again using the accelerated model. I would, and we keep mentioning the accelerated model. And, you know, if you ever want a individualized workshop on that, my math coach said that she'd be happy to come here and present that one night. So thank you, Mary Ann. All right? So there you go. All right. For our BOY reading, we go on, and this falls almost the exact same format. Here's our noticings, go on to the next slide, please. We have twenty-five percent or thirty-nine percent of our, thirty-nine students that at or above grade level. Thirty-seven percent are one grade level below. And a combined thirty-eight percent are two or more grade levels below. How we are reacting to that, we set our strategic goals and we want to increase our at or above from twenty-five to forty-five again by the middle of the year. And I just want to point out that both for reading and math, when we set these goals for the middle of the year, they're ambitious. And, but we sat down, we looked at the data, and we just didn't pull these numbers out of a hat. We actually matched up the percentages, these percentages with students and student names. Okay? And this child we can move, this child we can move. And it seems like a very broad jump on some of these percentages, but we're going to, you know, shoot high. And both of my coaches, again, and Nicole and Kurt were being here as well, you know, their confidence of my coaches, I actually said this, I think to Mr. Swan, and I, this kind of slipped out when I was putting this presentation together. I said, the confidence of my coaches is only exceeded by their competence. And, you know, and so I know, you know, they do a great job in leading a lot of the instruction at Ferrara and I really do believe that we can hit these ambitious goals. All right, areas of opportunity. This is for ELA. I just want to point out the last bullet, you may not be able to see it, but it says, provide coaching support for teachers to model. And we really have gone to a very strong coaching model at Ferrara where teachers are engaged with the coaches in what we call coaching cycles. And this is true for both reading and math. And I'm really expecting to see some significant gains because if you can really strengthen tier one instruction, the instruction that's going on inside the classroom, it could really have the potential for limiting the amount of interventions that are needed. Okay? And so that's kind of the vision that we see at Ferrara. Our next steps. For ELA, our up there, just want to draw attention, one of the things that we have been doing very purpose of, very purposely with ELA, and Nicole and I talk about this all the time, is having the teachers use what we call complex texts. All right? It's very important that the materials that they are using, not only are they accessible to the students at their particular level of being able to be challenged by using them, but they also, they need to be complex in nature. Having a complex text challenges the students to build vocabulary and comprehension, but also does it along with developing their critical thinking skills. Okay? And you don't get that with common texts that really isn't complex, that has the students challenge their actual thinking while they're working with their particular skills that they need to be developing along with that text. So it's an exciting time to be at Ferrara academically and instructionally. And what do we have next? Okay, so points of pride, some points of pride are this, is that for our percentage of targets achieved in the 2025 ESPA, for math, sixty-five point three percent of our students achieve that target, and in ELA, fifty-eight point two percent of our students achieve that target. So we are on a great path and that is it.
Thank you, Paul.
That was the fastest I've done anything in this district in seventeen years.
I clocked you in nine minutes, though. We really appreciate the opportunity to shift this into an academic workshop and to kind of flip the script and talk to you about where our students are starting out this school year and how that BOY data is driving the action planning at the school level. Couple of things that I hope you kind of were able to see as a through line is that this work is about honoring the abilities of our students, but I also just recognize our staff, our committed educators that are a part of this, the expertise that we've been able to learn from to drive innovation in other areas of the district, and the willingness of our team to take on new challenges together, to do that in a collaborative way, just the collaboration you're hearing.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Do you mind going to the hallway or the lower hallway?
But the level of collaboration that you're hearing, again, just across buildings, within buildings, I think is really powerful. Additionally, we've talked, last time Lisa and I, about how we're continuing to see steady growth in literacy. And we now have new challenges which are really exciting to address students that are starting the year, ready to learn, ready to engage with that grade level text, but ensuring that we have that access for all students at the same time. So those are like the right kind of challenges that we want to be pushing up against and how we've taken that to inform our work in mathematics. This idea behind that acceleration math model really came out of seeing the growth, that stair-step continuum that exists in literacy. That's not the way we know that mathematicians learn. And so what you heard about a through line of continuing to see some lagging skills within geometry, those are the final units in most math curriculum, anyone that you're going to pick up and try to implement as a program. So this speaks to the nature of accelerating the learning, but accelerating the pacing that our students are getting access every year to the grade level content so that we're not creating opportunity gaps. And I'm really excited to hear that we are all in with third grade for the first time this year to see the impact and that our coaches and interventionists working on this, the teachers that are giving feedback are working overtime so that we've been able to expedite to second and then build back out to fourth. It's tremendous. And then just some of the innovative programs that we're thinking about to look at student wellbeing more holistically, to ensure that our schools are inclusive, positive places to show up and learn every day. So my gratitude to the team and the teams that you represent because this is truly shared efforts from the classroom level, our paraeducators, our support staff throughout the buildings to be able to drive this change. So very grateful. Thanks, team. Maybe a couple minutes?
I wanted to say thank you. Other than that, I have met with Jen, just to go over to see about an update on the superintendent job descriptions. And in talking with her, I know the board, well, board members are invited to participate in the search. I haven't heard from anybody, so if those that do want to participate, if you go, let me know. If the meetings are at night, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to participate just because some things that I have to do, so someone will need to take that lead.
Shouldn't we wait until after the election?
Well, yeah, I'm just announcing it. We're not meeting about it.
Well, people can't let you know if they want to be on the search if they're not a board member anymore.
I don't think that's going to be an issue. Thank you, Karen. I have faith that you'll be returning. How's that? All right. On another note, tonight, we do have B and B here. If you guys remember several months ago, we all voted for RJ to go and look at extending the contract, keeping everything as was, and just getting the new prices, which he brought back to us. I know there were questions, so we have B and B here tonight. I thought it would be best if you hear everything for them to answer any questions, any concerns, and to explain how we got where we got. All right? So that's all from me. I will ask if there's any standing committee reports.
Just very quickly, I'd like to thank Lynn Turello for reminding me that in athletics, both with boys and girls, soccer teams have made postseason tournaments. So congratulations to all of the coaches and players, student athletes for soccer teams. Thank you.
See, we have nothing new this week, but there will be soon. Other than that, superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to share my appreciation again for welcoming the K-5 administrators to come and speak in regards to beginning of the year data and how that is informing action planning. Just a couple of those through lines, again, just to name them, is that we're continuing to see that our investment in early literacy is having steady growth. Students are coming in more ready to learn and access grade level instruction, and we know that that's foundational, and that the team has really studied what's working there to be able to apply it to address our lagging math performance. And so this year really launches the first year of applying that acceleration model in third grade, but in response to where we were at the start of the year, shifting gears to develop that work in second grade, so we're not waiting until third to be able to catch students up. The idea is that continues to expand, so thank you for that. Another really exciting announcement I wanted to share, just a shout out to our East Haven team. So later this week, the accountability results will be released by CSDE at the Capitol, and East Haven is getting special recognition for our work in increasing college and career readiness participation rates. As we reported on during Lisa's section of our last meeting, our participation rate was at ninety-five point four percent, which is three percent higher than the state of Connecticut. So we've been invited along with Milford and Vernon to participate in a roundtable in regards to post-secondary readiness. That's really the result of community collaboration, very passionate educators who always say what's next in our schools, and tremendous leadership. Lisa Velius and Dr. Jo Meringel really guided a lot of that work with our dual-credit expansion. But a big part of the driver of this is our CTE programming as well, and how we're continuing to expand those opportunities for students. So really exciting. I wanted to share.
And Adam, do you mind just like overview of all the different pathways?
Yes. Oh, my goodness, we have so many. We have fifteen, and I wouldn't do them justice from memory, so I'm just going to go to our new website, to the OCI department where you can find them all. This wasn't planned, I'm literally pulling them up. And it's under the programs. So that really calls out for, you know, families that are interested, we have them grouped in regards to humanities, STEM, CTE, and then in terms of our CTE pathway specifically, this is a list, we have construction, design pre-construction, business information management, general management, a teacher education training program, marketing management, professional sales, marketing research, facility and mobile equipment maintenance for automotive, service, support services, diagnostic services, therapeutic services, our food beverage services, our culinary program, logistics, inventory control, manufacturing, production and process, and engineering design and development. So there's a lot of tremendous opportunities here that our, the numbers indicate our students are taking advantage of. And really, the next phase of this work that we're seeing is how to help students design more precise course maps during high school that still give them the flexibility to consider a variety of pathways, how those courses may align with, say, a four-year college program, but can also position them to enter the workforce career-ready. And of course, all of this is underscored by making sure that our students are, in reflection of tonight's data presentation, are entering middle school and high school ready to take advantage of what's offered in East Haven.
Thank you.
Yeah. One more exciting announcement that just came through right before the meeting, too. We've mentioned how we were doing some realignment work with our curriculum around the kid governor program. We had two students in the past represent East Haven and be part of the governor's, kid governor's cabinet. This year, every fifth grader in East Haven is participating as a voting class, and so due to that recognition, we're a stop on the kid governor bus tour. So we're finding out some more logistics around that, but it's a really wonderful extension to what Lisa was presenting on with our new social studies curriculum. We brought rights and responsibilities, like what's the role of being a citizen within your community into the beginning of fifth grade curriculum. So this will be wonderful to see that play out right around election season, so students realize that this is real life and it's going to be a part of their future, so.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Lisa's not here, so we will move over to our COFO. RJ?
First on the list, POs, over seven thousand. You're seeing a few more of our beginning of the year tuition balances coming in, setting up our blanket POs for the current year, and our invoice package is there. If there's any questions, we can go over those now?
I have a question.
Jack?
Just one quick question. On page four, there was something that read, just explained to me, never delivered.
Yeah, an order that came in, we were credited for that, so we had to reorder, so that's the reorder coming in.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Mary Ann, you have a question?
I do. Bob, I noticed, I know we can't, we can't hire a BCBA, is that correct? Is that why we have this on the, we're outsourcing?
Correct.
Yeah. And the other question I have is for evaluations. Our school psychologists could not do those evaluations?
In district, they do.
Oh, those are out of district evaluations?
Those are out of district evaluations, including those at our magnet schools.
Okay. Don't they normally do those out of district? I know I remember my school psychologist would travel to different schools and do those evaluations.
No, no, she didn't. She did not. Maybe once in my time here.
I think she was assigned like three, three different students from three different schools. They don't do that any longer?
Probably over a hundred students in magnet schools requiring services.
So they don't do any of those out of district evaluations?
No.
Okay.
The other component that I think really was highlighted under Julie and Laura's presentation as well is looking at the, the growing population of students with disabilities within district as well, so current caseloads is really keeping up with the needs within district as well.
Okay. So Bob, when those annual, annual reviews and three-year reviews come up, that could be quite a bit of work that needs to get done, then.
So the testing window is triannual, so we only use those in three years, but we've been able to be pretty efficient with getting them done with our staff.
So, so the annual reviews, our staff does?
Annual reviews are only our staff.
Our staff does all, they do all the annual reviews? Initial evaluations will be outsourced?
Typically, initial evaluations are us as well.
Oh, that's what I was just asking.
Yeah, no, well.
But out, out of district students?
Initial evaluation of a student who's at a magnet school would typically be us.
Would be us?
Yes.
But these two, but these two were not?
Would probably be outside.
Okay, so it's probably a little both, then?
It could be. I mean, again, I don't know what students, we can't really speak to what students you're specifically addressing, but.
Okay. I was just looking at the two on, on the invoice for, for this month.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you tell me the school?
It doesn't say the school. No.
So probably a mag, triennial evaluation is probably a magnet school?
It, it doesn't really list that, so it's hard to know what exactly it was, so.
Or an approved private special education.
We could talk, we could talk later, too, if you'd like.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And just to highlight, too, since there are a few roles that we are outsourcing based on not having applicants in the pool to move forward with, we are keeping a very close eye on the vacancy analysis to see what the vacancies are reaping in benefits of money saved in the budget and using that money as a source to keep us in line with what we're outsourcing.
Okay, that's good.
So the vacancies, the number of absences, the vacant roles that aren't filled, district-wide, we are keeping a good eye on what that equates to on a daily basis. So when we're outsourcing based on the savings we realize from not having somebody in all those roles could equate to, and net zero is our hope for the outsourcing. So we are, we are very active in tracking all of our open vacancies, what it covers, what it means for us in cost of six-period coverage for staff, as well as outsourcing some of those roles, so we can have a net figure where we're hopefully, at the end of the day, being still on the positive side.
Perfect.
And Mayor, I want to apologize. I do know now which, which case you are referencing because Adam shared the PO with me. I wasn't looking at the sheet itself. Both of those evaluations were done by a specialist for a very specific reason within district.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
RJ, I was wondering, I mean, I got a chance to take a look, but if maybe at the next meeting you can share with the board how that's being done?
Sure.
With the shift?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Many of spreadsheets we can go through.
So many.
So many. Okay, so now.
Any other questions related to POs or invoices? So the next, the next piece is basing, is coming back to the transportation contract. At our last meeting, it was presented a contract extension that brought about many questions of changes in the contract. Before we move, I just wanted to be, let it be known that when we did the approval for an extension, the conceptual being of the extension was to keep the contract the same and just negotiate the pricing, which is why the terms of the contract were never brought into play. But based on the questions heard, we, we regrouped and contacted B and B to go over those options as, as requested, and in our conversation, they were more than willing to come to tonight's meeting to answer those questions themselves, and if anything else came up, to not leave any loose ends. So in speaking with Michelle, we thought it was a good idea to bring them present tonight to answer, answer those questions for us, so hopefully we can move forward in a, in a direction where, where we have some closure tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know how you want to.
One way or the other.
Yeah, do you want to have them come up, give them a mic? I don't know how you want to handle. Do you want to? Here. You want to give them a microphone? Is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
You can sit over there, probably.
Yeah, sit over there, so we can see you better.
Okay.
We can get more chairs.
Hopefully you can all hear me, okay? Is it, it's good? Okay. Okay. So good evening. My name is David Prudhomme. I'm the Director of Business Development for B&amp;B Transportation. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity for us to come here tonight, answer any questions that you may have regarding the current bus contract or the proposed extension. I'm joined this evening by Brad Cohen, who is our President and Founder, Dane Pilato, who is our Director of Finance. The three of us, along with our East Haven yard managers and drivers, have worked very closely with the schools and the administration for the last five years, and I think we've put together one of the premier bus programs that you'll find here in the state of Connecticut. We value the partnership that we have with the district, and we also enjoyed working very closely with the community over the last five years to provide this. Our drivers and staff and family have been very welcomed here in the town, and we're very appreciative of that. This summer, we worked closely with RJ and Erica Forti to review the contract, negotiate terms for an extension. The Board has asked us to come here tonight to answer any questions from the Board or from the community. We're happy to help in the way we can, so please feel free, ask us any questions you'd like.
Well, I think the overall question is, how exactly did we arrive at the percentage increase that we were given?
So the, what's that?
Sorry.
Okay. So initially, when we met with RJ and Erica, we had come in with a number a little bit higher than that, I think around 12%. We negotiated with them to try to cut to a number that worked for both the town and for B&amp;B. Just a couple of things with the increase, just to kind of give everybody an idea of, and I think you'll find it's not just B&amp;B, but industry-wide, and also, I'm sure, some of these things you'll find in your own district or in your own businesses. Some of the increases since the original contract was signed in '21, we've seen a 31% increase in labor rates. Our benefits that we pay to the employees have gone up 91%. Our maintenance costs are up about 75%. The cost of vehicles themselves are up almost 60%. Our insurance on the vehicles, on the business itself, is up 125%. The other thing to keep in mind is the run lengths. When we originally bid the contract and we started working on it, the runs were looked at as five-hour runs, and they're running about nine and a half percent longer than what originally was calculated and with the original bid. So there's an extra increase in there. Kind of along the way with that, just some of the, some of the cost increases we've seen that have affected that. In '22, commercial auto liability programs started to exclude abuse and molestation coverage for school bus companies and other areas. So those things that were, that coverage was originally in our insurance, was then excluded. We had to buy that back in. As you can imagine, it's pretty expensive coverage, but one that, you know, the contract demands and also one that we won't, we don't want to operate without. In '23, we actually went and opened our union contract up midterm to increase the pay rates to the drivers. That's really important, not just to keep the drivers we have, but we have to get the rates up for recruiting drivers. We're pretty proud of the fact that, unlike a lot of the districts, including the town that my kids go to school in, we have not had to short East Haven one bus in the last five years. So none of you or your families have had the experience that we get in my town, which is a text message at 6:30 in the morning that the bus is not coming today because they don't have drivers for buses seven, 12, and 31. So we've worked to keep those rates, those pay rates up, so we can continue to recruit drivers and keep our yard fully staffed. '23 FMLA kicked in for the state of Connecticut. That's also increased the staffing requirements for our bus yard, because we have to be able to keep spare drivers to supplement the drivers that are out on long-term leave. So that year, we've increased the number of standby drivers. In '24, the umbrella insurance providers capped what we can carry for abuse and molestation in our umbrella. So we've now had to have to purchase two separate umbrella policies to be able to maintain $10 million of coverage. And that's first-dollar coverage that we provide for the district. So if there's an incident on the bus, B&amp;B is the first-line insurance protection on an event like that, that occurs. So again, it's extremely important coverage for us to have. And this year, we've seen the state PTO laws change, decreasing the threshold for accumulated PTO hours. And our employee benefits this year alone up 47%. And I know that's, a lot of the school districts have seen that as well.
Any questions yet, or?
Questions? Nobody has any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a meeting today dealing in, on a different subject, but I was with the mayor and chief of police, fire police. They started, we started talking about the bus situation, and they're requesting that, and I just wanted to let you know, they're asking that any new buses that are purchased have the side cameras, so that they help them in, you know, assessing, you know, the people who are illegally passing buses. And just throwing that out there, the mayor requested me to ask you to make sure, if it's possible, that side cameras be added. I guess much like Mayor Loretty in Sheldon has done, that program. So I'm just throwing it out there for you.
Glad you take that.
Yeah. I live in Shelton. I see the cameras. Yeah, it's something we definitely can look into. There is, there's a company that, that does it. We just would have to make sure the town is okay, which it sounds like it is. We can work with the police department to make sure that we coordinate between the camera company, the police department, and ourselves to make it a successful program.
Yeah, they made it quite apparent that they're willing to do whatever it takes, you know, to get that done and to work with you.
And we'd be happy to do that.
Now, does that impact the cost? Are they going to pick that up?
Right now, it doesn't, because there's a company that provides the cameras. The only thing we have to look into is who maintains the cameras. And if the cameras get knocked off, because they're, they protrude quite a bit from the side of the bus. It's not like a little camera. It's a big one.
Yeah, why not?
So we, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to go, there, I know there's been some conversation about the increase, the 8.95 for the five years. As David said, when we originally negotiated this contract, it was in April of '21. And David certainly has made the cases what's happened since April of '21. When we originally came in, we originally came in, we were looking to do a three-year extension. And after much discussion with, with RJ and Erica, and what that would look like for increases, we felt it was better for the, especially for the Board and for us, if we spread it out over the five years, which is the normal length for school bus contracts in the state of Connecticut. Three years is, there aren't very many three-year contracts in the state of Connecticut.
Did you, like, let the Board know what it would have been at three years, as well as a one-year extension, just in case that comes up later?
Well, one year, I, you know, I wouldn't even, that...
You wouldn't consider?
I don't think we, I don't think we'd even consider it, but I mean, it would be 25% But three years was going to be somewhere in the 12, 12, 12 range, somewhere around there. We didn't get really far with that, because RJ was kind of adamant that that's a, was a non-starter. So we went to the, we went to the, to the five years. We feel as though the 8.95, we, we will, will help us to maintain the program that we're doing, but we really feel in the last couple of years, it's really beneficial for the Board of Ed to have that, the five years. Because we feel as though, we, we study comps of other contracts in districts surrounding you and so forth, and we are very competitive with that, and we're actually on, a little bit on the lower end of, of those comps. So you're getting a better price than most of your areas around you. And as they renew, they're only going to go higher. So we think at the end of the five years, we will be able to maintain what we've done successfully, but we feel as though we will be back at the low end of that scale. We're, we're almost 100% sure of that. So I think that going to five years is really beneficial for, more for the town than it is for us, although it is very beneficial for us also.
One of the concerns that a lot of people were discussing was the 12-year bus replacement. Is that standard? Is that what most companies do? Is that universal?
And how does it affect the price?
So your, your contract calls for no route buses, I believe, over eight years old, no bus in the fleet over 10 years old. And I believe you put it in there, I don't know if you had it in your contract before us, but I think you put it in there because of what, and I don't want to say anything disparaging about anybody prior, but I think it was because you weren't getting buses before that. We, we feel, I mean, we've been doing this a long ti, I've been doing this a long time. I know the business. I don't, I mean, to say it in a, you know, we're going to replace the buses no matter what your contract says. We've already started replacing your buses. There's not, there's not one bus on a regular run that's under 2022. We've already put in X amount of 2024s and 2025s. And then we have, I think of the, and that's in your full-size buses. Your smaller buses, we have three that are on order, they'll be 2025s and 2026s, and that'll then get all of your smaller buses all up over the 2022 range. And we're going to continue on a slow basis to replace your fleet. It all goes to reliability. You, you need the buses, even though the new ones give us a lot of problems, they don't give us as many problems as the older ones. And I'm talking when you start to get up in that eight-to-10-year range, especially where the buses are sitting in, in the yard that we have, which is, we have looked diligently for a different yard in the town of East Haven. But we can't pave where we are, and we're on a brackish marsh. So the buses on the top look great, but already our 2022s are showing more rust underneath than normal 2022s. So we're, we're going to continue that replacement plan, our own replacement plan, which will then coincide with what the contract calls for.
So that wasn't a driver in the price?
What?
That wasn't a driver in the cost?
Well, it's, it's included, but it's, but it's not making it, I think everything else that David said is, is far worse than what, what our replacement plan is. And we're not going to, we're not going to replace buses and, and make the cost go up because of that.
I think that was the concern.
Right. But, but they do have to be replaced. And, and one more thing, and if I'm talking too much, you just tell me. But one more thing with that is, as you get out five years, if we don't replace anything, you're just pushing down the road an increase that's incredible. Because if you think, well, we bought our 2022s, we bought them in '21, I think we paid $81,000 a bus. And we, we just ordered two new buses for your fleet at 132,000?
135,000.
So we know that they're going up to approximately $150,000 in a year and a half to two years. So if, if we don't continue to do this, we're going to be sitting, or we or somebody else is going to be sitting here, your increase at the end of the five years will be very, very large. So I, I think this spreads it out a little bit for you.
Tom, did you have questions about the fuel?
I talked to them before a meeting. I think we understand the fuel.
Does everyone understand the fuel? Because I don't, everybody wasn't in that convo. Do you mind just sharing that?
So with the fuel, right now, it's negligible what the difference between what we're paying for fuel and getting it, like, if, if the town were to provide it. We get all the tax, we don't pay any tax on fuel, and any tax we pay, we get back from the government. So we, we take the risk naturally if there's a spike in fuel and, but it's, in the five years that we've been doing this, for you, there was one spike. We kind of, you know, we got through that with no problem, and I don't think it's something, that's not a huge driver in this, in this contract. It's, it's really not.
I appreciate that, that explanation, because I do feel bad. I think that, I'm sure you did a great job, RJ. I felt like you took some heat for something that were, you know, I don't know how it kind of...
The price is the price.
Yeah, the price is the price. And I have full faith in, in what you've done, and I know you work very hard at that. By no means do we think you weren't giving us the right information or, but so, but I do, I respect that you came here to even explain it further. But, and I know you worked hard with, with RJ and Erica in the house, so.
I have a comment.
Sure.
We overspent our budget last year, 2.6 million. We're on a fiscal path that is not sustainable. I think you guys are a great company. I mean, you're an asset to our school system, so I'm glad you're our bus vendor. But together, we have to find a better way, because 9% per year for five years, it's not sustainable for our taxpayers, it's not sustainable for this school district. And honestly, anyone who signs onto that, in my mind, is just crazy, because are we signing onto our house taxes going up 9% a year for five years? I don't think anyone wants that. Now, I hear you comment about some things that intrigue me, how, what did you say? Sexual abuse?
Abuse and molestation coverage, yeah.
That, that's a tremendous problem for you.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe the Board could help you out in that. You know, maybe there's a different way.
I don't think legally there is.
You need to pay law. Maybe the town has something. I don't know. And I'm not, I'm not saying that 8.9%, I'm not saying you guys are robbing us and making, I'm just saying, there's no way. There's no way. We have to find a better way. Maybe we have to cover up, maybe we have to close the school. We cannot spend 9% per year to run this school district. There's no way. We'll never survive.
But if we go less time, it would be more money.
Maybe, who knows? I mean, there's, I mean, I don't want to sit here and tear apart here.
So is there a wrinkle room on this abuse insurance, as Tommy asked?
No, I mean, you could, you could spend, on, on, which so far, we haven't had, but we certainly study throughout the country and, and watch this with other bus companies and so forth. You can easily spend $1 million on legal fees and win the case. It's, it's, that's not unheard of. You could spend $1 million on legal fees and not win the case, and then the $10 million is nothing. But we're covering it from, from, what do you call it?
First-dollar coverage.
First-dollar coverage.
And, and Brad is right in that, an abuse and molestation claim against the school district, against the school bus company, against a coach, against, is a limits claim. It's very hard to put a number on that claim. And for the district's sake, for the sake of our business, for our families, we need to carry that much coverage on that. It's, it's, it would be very detrimental to the district, to us, to a lot of people.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, I don't dispute that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that there might be another way. I'm, I'm sure we have 2,500 students up there, 450 staff. I'm sure we have similar, similar liability.
Yeah.
It has to be, right?
Yeah.
Do we have it on the buses, RJ?
The buses, no, the school district carries it, the county policy.
Yeah. B&amp;B provides you the, the coverage, that first-dollar coverage on the buses.
So that it wouldn't have to go to the town or the school?
Right. Exactly. And I would assume, I mean, the, if, that your agent or agency that you work with would probably be better to give you that answer as to what their feeling is on us not carrying that first-line coverage and how that, because that's probably figured in your, in your rating and...
I, 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 listen, I'm not here to pick your financial statement apart.
Oh, I understand.
You guys are a great company. You guys run a great company. There might be a better way. Because there's no way we can pay 9% per year increase. We'll, we'll be on a path that's not sustainable. Nobody wants that.
RJ, did you check any comps with other districts, what they're coming in at? No, I, I'm just curious. If we can't afford to pay nine, how are we going to afford to go anywhere else? I just want to see what's out there.
So I spoke to North Haven, who just entered into a contract with DATCO, and their five-year for a five-hour run was 16 and sixes for years two through five. So they were within 5% for a smaller run.
Anyone else?
And fuel, they purchased themselves.
I think it's good to have an idea where everyone's charging.
Yeah.
It doesn't make a difference, Michelle. We can't run the school system like this. We have to change the way we're operating.
Well, I think we're obligated to have buses, so.
Unless you have a separate-
We're obligated to have transportation.
But what else would we use?
You said buses. I'm saying transportation.
Okay, transportation.
They'll be in two different things.
You're, you're right. I guess we all individually pick them up in a, in a car, but-
Whatever. There's no way.
But what's the alternative?
I like you guys.
So what's the alternative?
There's no way this town-
Yeah. What's the alternative?
What?
What's the alternative?
Who knows? We're going to have to put our minds together and figure it out. There's got to be some way to save money.
To get 2,900 children to school not using buses?
Or less, I don't know, less buses? How many of the buses are not?
Less buses, close the school, I don't know. Joint forces with another town? I don't know.
So there was a question from Lynn around, can you state that again, please?
Do we have buses going on runs that are not full? Like, do we have a lot of half-full buses, like, where we might be able to cut back a couple buses?
So I can speak to this quite intimately. When we took over the contract, I actually managed the bus yard from the first summer school and through until we got the managers that are currently there, Barbara and Linda, their feet on the ground. So the high school buses, I'm sure if you look at them, you would see that the ridership is lower naturally, just because you have students that can drive. There's also a stigma in high school that they don't want to ride the school bus, so their parents will bring them. However, it's not the high school runs that are the issue, it's more of the elementary runs. Your Tuttle and Mammaglin runs are chock-full. There have been instances where, in other districts, we have encouraged them to add buses. We haven't done that. We haven't made that suggestion to you guys. When we took over the bus contract coming out of COVID, I believe the bus numbers were four and 17, RJ. I put them on the, you'll see they're skipped, their bus numbers are skipped on the invoices that we send. The reason why those bus numbers are skipped is because during COVID, you guys had eliminated them because of ridership. Those buses haven't come back. So in a, a ridership that, a town that used to have two more buses in your system, you're still operating without them. The Vinyl Tech Run, we add as a throw-in and charge no additional money toward. I know that you split that bus with North Branford? North Branford. We don't charge extra for that. We're able to tack it on to another run. Stuff that we have done our best to look out for the town, mostly because we know that, again, not to disparage anybody before, but there was a concern before with some transparency before, and we've been with RJ and Erica and, well, Adam, been very transparent about what we charge for and what we're not charging for in, in the invoices.
RJ, I have a question. I, I know there's areas in our town that are definitely not walkable without sidewalks. Do we have-
That's where Jen lives.
There's a, there's a lot of areas without sidewalks. Do we have a, like, a mileage? Like, I know in Milford, it's, it's a mile, and you have to get your child to school if they don't get, they don't have buses. Do we have anything like that here in East Haven?
No.
So everyone, no matter where they live, how close they live, have access to a school bus?
Yeah, so at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the year in this contract, we installed Traversa through Power School. So we talk through our program when a student gets enrolled, and every year, the student gets rolled over, the student will automatically be placed on a bus, and when a new student comes in, it'll show up on their queue, so they know to assign that student a bus. So before the start of school every year, every student is assigned to a bus.
I mean, like, I know, I'm just thinking of the town, like, Tuttle would be a walkable school. There's sidewalks all through the center of town. Deer Run, probably not.
Right.
So have we ever looked at that?
We have not.
So what, you want first graders to walk to school?
They do it in other towns. I do, I bring my, my great niece to school every, every Friday in Milford.
If they choose to. If they don't want to walk, I think we're obligated.
It's, it's a walkable, it, I don't think we are.
That's what the legislation said. I looked it up, and it said we are obligated to provide transportation for every child of the season.
For every child, no matter where they live?
And it almost becomes more dangerous walking and more dangerous having-
In that town, but they do.
People.
I fear we'd be in chronic absenteeism, that we've been working so hard.
That's why I was, yeah, you start to compete.
Definitely going backwards.
Yes.
And we remove access.
Just thinking of ways that we could save money, but.
I also don't think there's that many kids that could live.
To touch on that, if you, for example, if you said you weren't going to offer transportation to any Tuttle students, it would shorten the runs, but you would still have a high school and middle school tier to that, so you wouldn't really eliminate any buses, per se.
Well, I don't think you could eliminate all buses for that school. I'm just-
No, I, I, I'm just, if, in a, in a hypothetical situation, you, you, in order to eliminate a full bus throughout the entire day, you'd have to eliminate a high school, middle academy, and an elementary run.
Where you can save money.
So, well, yeah, I mean, if you brought the average bus route time down, then you would save money. I just don't know if you would see that in, I'm trying to think, there's six buses at Tuttle, so it would, I don't know if it moves the needle as much.
I just, I mean, I just threw that out, because I know there's not a lot of sidewalks in our town.
Yes. I, I just don't, I just wanted you to know that if you went that route, that you might not see the whole savings you're looking for. And I don't know if the pushback would be worth this, that's obviously something for you guys to decide.
Okay.
RJ, I got a question. So at the end of five years, are busing bills going to be 4.5? No. Is that right?
All right, not, yeah.
What's our special ed busing bill?
That's built into this. All the, all the transportation provided by-
So there's nothing on top of that?
Well, there's, there are some specialized runs that are built into a separate budget line, but this, the 3.2 annual spend incorporates the in-district and out-of-district runs that they handle for that. I, top of my head, probably a couple million dollars.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So you're talking, we're going to be spending 6.5 million dollars on transportation for 2,500 kids. I mean, we could get a cargo to come in and fly to school.
Your, your special ed transportation is not for a large number of students.
What's that?
The, that's, that 2 million for special ed is not for a very high population of students.
No, I understand.
Unfortunately, based on the needs-
What, 6.5 million dollars on transportation?
But that's transportation that's specialized, that can't be buses, correct?
Correct, correct.
A lot of them, some of them are like ambulance and-
Yes, yes.
So.
And that would be state mandated.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to put that out there for people that may not be aware of that. We don't have control over picking the way that some children have to be transported. So no matter what we do with this, that states.
Not that I'm necessarily suggesting this, but just for the sake of argument, you know, the middle school and the academy are right next to each other. If they were to come on buses together, would that be a cost savings at all?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that. I know there, we floated that idea year one, and there was a, the pushback was that families didn't want to mix the two schools. Would there be a cost? We'd have to look at the routes. There, there are often times where two buses are following each other, a middle school and academy run, because they both pretty much are doing the entire town. We'd have to look at capacity. It's, it's not something that I could definitively say one way or the other. But it was something, but I do know the school's disribals and dismissals are a little bit different.
Yeah, they're, they're off by five minutes, but I believe that point is more to the idea of first graders riding with, with eighth. Just kind of that age gap is my understanding with the separation.
We know the percentage of- In the academy anyway.
Wholeness?
Whether it be at the middle school or not.
They do, right?
Yeah, but the academy, parents didn't want them riding.
Yeah, but I, I think they still want them to ride.
We don't.
Right, right.
What is the percentage of how full the buses are to even, is that even feasible?
The middle school runs are much more full than the academy runs are. Again, I wouldn't, I couldn't definitively say if we could merge them all. Again, you still run into, you'll just cut buses out of the middle, you have buses doing a high school and then an elementary, but nothing in between. The bus runs will get longer, which again, is a, a cost savings in itself instead of adding buses. We do have difficulty, the, the geography of the town is, I'm sure that, I'm preaching to the choir on this, is-
That's where Jen lives.
Is, 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 is difficult. No, I'm talking about your main artery, North High Street, being the only way to get from north to south. You know, we have a bus that leaves the high school, it's probably one of the lowest-capacity buses. It has to go all the way down to, I believe it's Morgan Avenue? Down in the shoreline? Yeah, Morgan Point, go around there, and it's one of the last buses, it was holding up, I remember teachers the first year, and it had like seven students on it. But they had to get all the way from here down to Morgan Point, and then come back through North High Street to get to the middle school. And it was, it was running late a lot of the times, like, well, is there any way to, you can only go so fast and cover so much distance, so.
That's my problem, but I'm on this end to get to the middle.
Yeah, you're up in North Haven?
My daughter takes a van, because the big buses won't come down.
I've driven that run, and they, you can't believe that you're still going in East Haven. I've got to be out in East Haven at this point, right? And you just keep going.
Now, as far as the maintenance, because you said it's up 75%. Do you think if you did, say you did find a new yard, it would be a cost savings just on maintenance alone, because you're saying it's rust? I mean, 75% is huge for buses that are five years old.
Yeah, the long, we would, you'd more likely see the longevity of the buses increased, which we wouldn't have to replace as many. The maintenance, yeah, I mean, it would, listen, it, it would be helpful to get out of where we're currently at. As we've said, we've worked with a lot of people with the town to try to find a place, but there weren't many prospects.
But would that change the maintenance cost increase?
It, I mean, it would. It would be tough to forecast that at this point. Like, if you said, hey, we'll give you a paved lot tomorrow, I, I mean, we still have buses that have-
But would that be reduced, or would it just be less than what the 30-something is already?
No. A lot of the, most of the maintenance is in oil change, filters, the, the oil itself, the filters are up tremendously, tires are up, brake, hardware, brake shoes, brake drums. So that stuff is not so much about where we are, it's just wear and tear on the bus, period. Getting out of where we are, as the buses get older, we see that they're going to require a lot more maintenance, which is one of the reasons that we want to have, whether you have it in the contract or not, we want to have a replacement plan for the buses. So the, the, you know, just on maintaining the 2022s, we're, we're just, you know, we're, now we're at the point where we're starting to replace tires on the 2022s, and, you know, it's just, the tire's where they were in 2021 to where they are now, everything is just up.
So the location really would not impact?
No, the location wouldn't impact, because that's mostly just general maintenance. And we, we have, again, I understand exactly what you're saying about the total amount of money. If you come up with a different way, we're, we're open to cutting, you know, if you think that, you know, however you want to do it, whether it's closing a school, which we're not advocating that, or, or whatever, but we strongly feel if you stay with school buses, we are as competitive as you're going to get, and we think we're on the low end. And, and we worked with RJ very closely to make sure that we were. So, and we're willing to do anything we can to help, if you come up with something else, we're, we're, we like to think of ourselves as cutting-edge, so we're willing to do anything as we go down the road to do that. But if, if, as school buses go, our daily rate is as competitive as I think you're ever going to get.
Okay.
Let me just ask you a question. I, I'm just, and I don't think there'd be any significant savings, but is there a reason why there's no more bus stops rather than individual, like, you know, your-
There are bus stops. There's bus stops. There's not ever individual, unless there's no sidewalks, once streets-
Or service.
Yeah, sidewalks.
So there, there are still, people congregate, five, six, seven, eight, two, seven?
I don't know how many, but there's still bus stops.
So I live on a very short street.
Right.
Last year, we had three stops, Main Street, Elm Court, and Sydney.
Right.
Literally, it's a block. Three stops on my street. One, two, three. So I think we're down to two.
I don't think the stops would, but the stops make a difference?
Yes, the, every time a bus has to stop, you've got to figure at least a minute. So yes, the amount of buses, which is what we touched on earlier, is that when this went out to bid in '21, the runs, it, it was that, and I, I want to say this delicately, but the runs were, were put out there that they were going to be approximately five hours, and they're not. And so every time you add a stop, the run gets longer.
So what are the distance between stops? Because are you guys advocating for less stops, the kids walk to meet?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that.
Okay, so what would that?
It's, it's all based on safety, for the mo, for the most part. So you can't really say, you know, depending on the street, you may have to stop house to house, and then others can walk all the ways out of, from a cul-de-sac. It, it, there's really no rhyme or reason.
And looking at what we have, where do you think we are? Like, should we be looking to reduce stops, or are we in a good place?
No, that- Changes, the number of stops that you have really changes from year to year, right? So you have kids coming in and out of different schools, moving between different buses. One of the things you have to keep in mind is, there are certain protocols, like, if you have a kindergartner, they're not crossing North High Street, right? There, there needs to be stops set up for those students that are safer, closer to their house. We also have different requirements for them as far as parents needing to be at the stop and things like that. I'm a big fan of community stops and kids getting together and socializing and, and being at the bus stop. But also a parent, and I know that you have to work in the confines of what streets can kids walk down to get to bus stops and what they can't. But it changes every year. You know, every year, like RJ was saying, we have a, a piece of software that Power School uploads us a transition of students, and it kind of reshuffles the, the bus routes and the bus stops. And that's another thing that's changed. In '21, when we took this over, I venture to say bus routes were done in pencil, on paper, literally. And Dane and I had a four- or five-day session where we didn't see our children, sitting locked in a conference room, being fed pizza by Brad and Beth, to go through every run in the town and get them modernized into a computer system, get them, and more efficient. And then we had to go out and sell it to the drivers, and then the first week of school came. And we had parents realizing that their kid's bus stop was to be here, and now it's there. And that was an adventure, too. But getting through that first couple weeks, I think we've got the runs way more efficient than they were. I, I'm confident in saying that, that based on where they were to where they are now, and certainly with the addition of the software and the routing, and two really good managers working in that yard every year and handling the routing every summer, we want those, we want those runs to be as efficient as possible also. It, it has an effect on us, too, so.
Okay. I just, are your bus drivers union, are they?
Yes.
And what is their, like, starting rate of pay for their contracts? Like, what do they make an hour? Just out of curiosity.
We really can't discuss that right now, we're in the middle of negotiations.
Okay, okay.
Right, I mean, we can't.
It's definitely a sticky situation, you know?
We get it.
Okay, yeah, no, understood.
It's competitive, right?
Oh, we have to be, and that's one of the reasons that, that your runs are up.
And you also come with good work ethic, and, and there's less complaints about buses than we've ever had before, right?
I can tell you from a parent's standpoint, they're very accommodating and... I will give you a personal example. I had an issue with Tessa. She can get off the bus on her own because she's sixth grade, but personally, I couldn't let her get off the bus, and they're very accommodating to figure out how to make that work with my, getting my other kid and work. So they're very receptive and they're always making it work somehow.
Put a cost on everything, Jen.
And we get a lot of the credit on that. Needs to go to the two ladies that run the bus yard here in East Haven, and we were fortunate. Brad was able to be a heavy negotiator and get them away from a, a surrounding town, a neighboring town. Brad, they had been in the bus business probably as long as Brad. Their family maybe longer than Brad, and we kind of enticed them in the idea of coming back to work in a family business and, and being in this environment, and based on the nature of where our company is structured and the size, that helps too. You know, having a smaller company, Brad and Beth, Beth's now retired, but Brad is readily available, and Dane and I are available, and, but the managers make a big difference in the bus yard, and the drivers in your community have been here for a long time. The drivers love driving in East Haven and they want to be here, and we want to make sure that the compensation is such that it makes it work for them, for sure.
Thank you. Did anyone have any other questions? No? Well, if you have any closing remarks, otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. RJ, did you have anything else under your report?
No, that was, that was, unless there's any other questions related to transportation.
We'll wait till we get to the agenda item to discuss further. Let's move it on to acceptance of meeting minutes. Are there any objections or revisions to the October 14th regular board meeting minutes? If not, we will accept the minutes. It moves us to audience of citizens. Is there anyone here that would like to speak this evening? Kids want to come back up now. Okay, we... Yeah, we need business. 6.1, discussion impossible action to approve the B and B bus contract extension.
And extension, yes.
Do I have a motion to open?
I make a motion to discuss, oh no, to approve the B and B bus contract and extension.
Second.
Questions? Let's open it up.
So I just have a comment. I just want to say I agree with Tommy with it's going to be a problem financially, but I don't think that's a reflection on B and B themselves. I think that's what we're going to get for the best thing right now, but we may have to figure out something in the district to save money somewhere else at some point.
Yeah, I don't think, I, once again, to agree with Jen, like as a parent, I love B and B. Like I, they've been amazing, like wonderful, so accommodating. I hear nothing but good things about them from other parents as well, but I don't think that the contract is sustainable for us over the period. And whether or not, you know, I don't think the pricing, given the cost of all the things they, they said, their maintenance costs, like the cost of goods, everything, everything, the price of everything is up. So I think it's fair. I just don't think it's sustainable for our district. I, without, you know, making some kind of cuts, whether we reduce buses or close a school or, you know what I mean? Like there's going to have to be some sort of creative problem solving on other things to make it affordable for us.
That's going to probably take some time.
Right.
But we need buses for the fall.
We need buses. Right, no, agreed. We need buses. I mean, I, it's just, it's not affordable for us.
Nothing's affordable.
No, right.
I got one comment, Michelle.
Go ahead, Tommy.
I happened to go and look at the fiscal audit today. Had us listed RJ for $78 million spent on the board ad. There's no way. It's not sus, not sustainable. We only have 2,500 students. Do the math on that.
All right, thank you. Mary Ann, did you have any comments or questions?
No.
No, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, you have something?
I just want to know, so if this were to be approved tonight, okay, and Tommy's prophecies prove true, and it is not sustainable three years from now, and we say this is just, we can't do this anymore, what, what kind of obligations are we under? What kind of, what happens?
I think we would, you know, B and B has been great to always come to the table, and I think there is a clause in our contract, correct me wrong in the exact wording, if anything came up with solar initiatives or any other initiatives, that it would re, it would cause us to come together to move forward in a way that's best for all of us. I think if it's straight financial terms, it's, it's our issue, but if anything leads to those financial issues, like those items I mentioned, anything that comes down that is a requirement for us to change, a drastic change to the contract and pricing in that regard would cause us to come back to the table.
Anything else?
And if I, if I can just add one, one little note, I mean, if, just to not put fear in people that are watching the meeting potentially, the difference between this contract rate and say a 5% rate is around $150,000. So I don't necessarily think that a drastic change of closing a school would fill the gap of a transportation gap in one year of that amount, and I only say that because I don't, the last couple of years have been rocky here with throwing around some, like, the, the staff need to have some confidence in us moving forward, and if that's a plan, great, but I don't think that's the solution for this one topic, if I can put my two cents in.
No, I don't think anyone here would want to close a school just to meet a bus price.
Exactly what you said is true, but this is what happens as you know what you went through last year. Sooner or later, the town can't take it anymore.
Correct.
They cannot allocate the money, and guess what happens? What do you think happens? What do you lose when the town doesn't fund us? Staff.
Correct.
Staff. I was here one year when we got rid of 38 principals and teachers, and because you're locked into the bus contract and you're locked into this and you're locked into that, guess what suffers? The people, the staff, because that's the only thing that you really have control over, and there's no way we should be heading down that path. It's, it's ridiculous.
All right, RJ, before we vote, do you have anything to say?
No, I would just add that, you know, I want you all to know that it's not in my, I don't find it fun to bring an 8.95 contract to you, but based on the conditions, based on the net network that I work with through the state of Connecticut in, in comparing, comparing this contract to others, I think it, you know, for what it's worth, it's, it's in our best interest at this point in time to, to not take a chance at a higher rate.
Thank you. All right.
But again, that's, that's, that's not, that's too...
Adam?
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
No.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
No.
Dr. DeLucia?
Yes.
Three opposed, motion passes.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. I will see everybody November 18th hopefully.